I'm going to open this special city council meeting of December 3rd, 2024. This public meeting of the city council is recorded on Zoom with a link that is posted on the agenda. If you are calling in on a phone or receiving phone calls, please shut your phone off. You can press star nine to request to speak. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raised hand button. You can tap or press to request to speak. Please use either of these options during oral communications to be recognized to speak. There will be no oral communications tonight since it is a special city council meeting. If technical difficulties arise and the Zoom link is interrupted during an in-person hybrid meeting of the city council and a quorum is present, the meeting may continue after efforts have been made to reestablish the link. The minute shall note Tonight, we have in person, we have Ward one councillor Scott Memart, councillor at large Jason Grow, Ward two councillor Dylan Benson. I'm Tony Gross, city council president. Online, we have Ward four councillor Frank Majota, and we have councillor at large Valerie Gilman and Sean Nolan should be joining us shortly. Ward five councillor and council vice president Sean Nolan. And city legal Suzanne Egan is also with us online. And we have Grace Poyer is our city clerk in attendance. So our first item is to take care of some business that was a last-minute entry because I was not made aware of it until late yesterday afternoon. So by open meeting law, you're allowed to put it on a, on an agenda if it is not known to the chairperson or president within the 48 hours. And this is just a, there's no action to be taken, but this is a city council vote to suspend the implementation of GZO, chapter five, article five, short-term rentals to April 15th from January, I mean, April 1st, 2025, from January 1st, 2025. And this is due to a difficulty in getting the permitting up because of short staff and that requires no action. Our next order of business will be in accordance with the city charter, section nine dash three A, the city council will reconsider its October 1st, 2024 vote to adopt the multifamily overlay district and the ancillary zoning amendments. Now, tonight's action will be, if we want to allow this, have this go to a referendum vote, then we will need to reaffirm our votes, just so that everybody's aware. If we rescind our votes, then the referendum is no longer necessary because it has been rescinded, but then the process will start all over again. So I think to honor the wishes of the public, I think that this is probably prudent that this go to a referendum. That is my, my opinion only. And right now, I will read the motion. Motion in accordance with the city council, section three dash nine A, the city council will reconsider its October 1, 2024 vote to adopt the multifamily overlay district and its ancillary zoning amendments. And I so move. Motion made by councillor Gross, seconded by councillor Grow. Discussion.
We want to have Suzanne weigh in on the process at all, or are we?
Do you feel more comfortable doing that?
I think it'd be great if we could just have Suzanne just give us an overview of the process and the various routes we could do because we could end this tonight. That's one option. And I don't think it's necessarily, as you mentioned, the prudent option, but I think that it'd be good to hear from her what.
Councillor Egan?
Yes, thank you.
Walk us through this. Thank you.
Sure, I can walk you through the process here. So as councillor Gross just noted, that the city council, the city charter, section nine dash three A, it states the council shall reconsider a measure that has been adopted. And due to the referendum petition, we know that that measure is the multifamily overlay zoning district with the additional amendments. So the council is required at this point to reconsider that measure that's been adopted. Then if the charter goes on to say, if the measure has not been rescinded, that matter shall go on to the, the next local ballot. Shall be a ballot question at a local election. That can be either the next election or a special election as, that is within the council's discretion. So the effect of voting to rescind the zoning ordinance will, as councillor Grow stated, that will act as to, as though the amendment did not occur, right? So that no amendment would be in place. And if you vote no to rescind, to not rescind, then that goes on the ballot measure. At this point, the amendment has been suspended, so it's not in effect. Once that referendum petition had, was filed with the city clerk's office and the board of registers certified those votes, the measure was suspended. So right now, we don't have that zoning ordinance in effect in the city of Gloucester. As you know, chapter 40A, section three A, requires the city to have a compliant zoning ordinance. Because it's been suspended, because we have the choice, you have two choices here. You cannot rescind it, right? You're out of compliance. I mean, you're out of compliance because it's been suspended, or you can rescind it and you're out of compliance because it's been rescinded. So, and when the city is out of compliance, that means that we're not eligible for any of the grants that, from the state government, that the state has determined we would be eligible for. Now, I heard today in anticipation of this meeting from the division of Housing Livable Committee, Community, I'm sorry, Housing, HLC, who is in charge of implementing this program, and they have informed us in anticipation of this meeting tonight, that they will treat us as though we are out of compliance as of January 1st and hold back all state grants that we would have otherwise been eligible for by virtue of adopting this ordinance. So, and the best, and their preference is that the council not rescind the amendment and that it be placed on the ballot at the, as, for the local, for a referendum vote. And so that, before you tonight, is sort of two, you know, it's two votes, one to put it on the ballot, or one to completely rescind it. And that would then be, you'd be required, the city would be required to start the process all over again.
That's what I grow as a question.
Suzanne, just for clarification, the referendum vote, should it come to that, is not a vote on whether or not we adopt three A as law or accept three A as law. It's, it's only on the proposal that was put forward by the planning board and approved by the city council, correct?
Right. So what the referendum process does is it says, city council took the vote to adopt it. And when, what this does is say, we're going to put the same exact amendment on the ballot. So we're giving it a popular vote. So when it comes, if you put it on the ballot, then the, the vote or the question before the general public or all the registered voters is whether to adopt that zoning amendment, the multifamily overlay district, then they vote to take the same action that the council had taken, whether or not to adopt that.
And if the vote is no, if the vote says, we're not, we're not going to accept this proposal as, as it's presented, what happens then?
Then the, you don't have a multifamily overlay district.
Out of compliance and we have to start again.
Yeah, I mean, we're out of compliance now. And then we'd be, you know, consistent with being out of compliance. We would maintain our non-compliance with the state law. If the vote is yes, to adopt it, then we become a compliant community and are eligible for all of those grants.
So every road currently leads to non-compliance unless the voters vote to accept the proposal that we put forward in October?
Exactly, right. Great.
Right now, there's questions for Suzanne. Frank, you have a question?
Yes. My question, my question is, can you, if we're going to be out of compliance, can, depending on when the election is, can you, can we backtrack any of these grants money? Or do we lose it as we don't accept until we are in compliance?
So the state.
Because they're way to backtrack. Sorry.
So the HLC's attorney informed me that the state is going to treat, is going to treat us as out of compliance, and we won't be eligible for those grants. So any, so, you know, as you know, that prior to the vote, I believe it was, or shortly thereafter, the vote of the council to adopt, the city was awarded two grants because it stated that we were in compliance. Those will be held back.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any more, any discussion on this motion?
Does the council understand what they're voting on?
Motion is in accordance with the city charter, section nine dash three A, the city council will reconsider its October 1, 2024 vote to adopt the multifamily overlay district and its ancillary zoning amendments. So I guess in, as I understand it, a yes vote keeps us basically where we were for my previous votes, and it continues on the path to go to a referendum.
Not really.
No, the motion to rescind is second. Reconsider. Yes, we have to agree to reconsider. Yes, to get to the motion to, to rescind. We have to agree to reconsider.
Is that correct, solicitor?
Yes. So your first vote is, the charter, charter requires you to do, to reconsider it. So your first vote is to reconsider. Once you do that, once you vote to reconsider as you're required to, then your second motion is a motion to rescind. And then that's where you have that second discussion.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any more discussion on the motion? Okay, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Councillor Gross?
Yes.
Councillor Grow?
Yes.
Councillor Majota?
Yes.
Councillor Memart?
Yes, to reconsider.
Councillor Benson?
Yes.
Councillor Gilman?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. The motion to reconsider passes.
Okay, on to the motion to rescind. Motion to rescind the October 1, 2024 vote to adopt the multifamily overlay district and its ancillary zoning amendments. And I so move.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Grow, seconded by councillor Grow. Discussion? Questions?
Yeah, all right.
That's what I grow.
I am absolutely, of course, not going to support the motion to rescind this for a couple of reasons. Not, not the least of which is the referendum vote, which I think is an unfortunate development, frankly, in this particular situation because the proposal that was prepared and developed through a year's worth of public meetings and public input was about as minimal as we could possibly hope to have achieved under the, under the rubric that we had to work with in terms of the TOD. And so failing this, if we, if we fail this proposal, we will send us back to the planning board to come up with a more arduous proposal, something that is more difficult to achieve, is perhaps more far-reaching in its scope. And I don't think that's what we wanted to do with this particular situation. But more importantly, you know, the, the issue of non-compliance is, is pretty bad right now. I looked, I looked up the list right now that 100 communities out of 177, 100 communities that are due on, on the 31st of December to have a compliant model have, 100 communities have already voted in compliance. We would be an outlier in that particular listing. And while some people may celebrate that outlier status, what it's doing is it's literally costing us hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars from day one. Not, we had hoped before that the state would treat us as interim, in interim compliance until the end of the referendum. It's been made clear to us that that is not going to happen, which means that the $400,000 grant that we received for the Gloucester Avenue infrastructure repair program is going to be gone. The $500,000 wastewater treatment plant grant that we got is going to be gone. There is a potential nearly $1 million in the library payments that the state is making to the, to the city of Gloucester, a total of $8 million over the next five years, could be very well gone. We are talking about potentially losing our housing choice community appellation, the designation that gives us a preferential borrowing rate on a $206 million secondary treatment plant. All right? That is millions of dollars. Now, that project is going to happen. We are going to pay for it. We have, we're making a choice here not to pay for it with state dollars. We're, we're not going to pay for it with a reduction in interest rates. So that, that's the, that's the net effect of this. Because at the end of the day, regardless of what happens at the referendum, we will either be in compliance or we will not be in compliance. And if we are not in compliance, we will start this process all over again. We will come up with a new plan. The planning board will vet it. It will come to the city council. The city council will vet it. We will vote on it, and we will vote to be in compliance. And if at that point we have another referendum, we will engage another process like this, and eventually we will become compliant. Because not being compliant is cutting our own throat. It's literally, I'm, I'm, I've rarely been so upset about an issue as I have been in this one. Everything that was done to make this as minimally invasive, as minimally problematic for Gloucester was done, more so frankly than I would like to have seen it. And what we're doing now is we are literally taking food out of our mouths. The Gloucester Housing Authority is facing a reduction in their own, their own financing from the state. That's seniors, people. All right? That is the, the, the most at-risk people in our community are going to be facing greater costs and fewer services. Okay? And for what reason? None. Okay? Our sovereignty has not been attacked. Okay? We haven't, we haven't, we haven't lost anything except access to a lot of money that we need. This reminds me of when we, we didn't do the CPA years ago, and people were like, ah, I don't want that money. Well, our money went to other communities. So this grant money that we're losing, that has to be spent by the end of the fiscal year. So guess where it's going to go? It's going to go to every one of those 100 communities that voted compliance, not us. All right? That's the legacy of this movement. And frankly, I'm, you know, it's very upsetting. I will not be voting to rescind. I respect the fact that the people, the public wants to vote. That's fine. But I hope to God that they know what they're voting on. Because the petition and the manner in which it was, it was, it was collected was an embarrassment. People did not know what they were signing. That's the truth. And the fact of the matter is, if I could realize how much harm they were doing to their community, they never would have signed it.
Council president, I know the vice president is absent, fellow councillors, members of the public here, and those listening elsewhere. I will be voting no on rescinding the council's original approved multifamily overlay district. This multifamily overlay district was well thought out and took many months of careful consideration, including input from the city council members through subcommittee meetings, as well as joint meetings with the planning board. As a result, the planning board came up with a solution that, in my view, was aligned with reality and took public input into account. Gloucester had extensive public engagement, including public forums, workshops, and presentations. I feel confident that our community had one of the most comprehensive and inclusive engagement process in the Commonwealth when it came to three A. I also spoke to many people in my ward and elsewhere who said they didn't fully understand what they were signing when it came to the petition to annul the council's vote, including my own father. They told me that they hadn't, if they had known the full details, they wouldn't have signed the petition. This feedback is important, and we should consider that as we move forward. I must also address the farcical legal argument that municipalities possess some inherent sovereignty and not fully understanding what home rule is. This argument is based on a bogus legal theory. Legality, cities and towns in the Commonwealth and across every state in our union do not possess ultimate authority to govern independently. As a municipality, Gloucester can only exercise the powers granted to us by the Commonwealth. We do not have any inherent powers beyond what the Commonwealth has explicitly given us. Under 40A of the Massachusetts general laws, there are numerous provisions that cities and towns must follow. For example, section nine outlines the requirements for issuing special permits related to zoning changes, or zoning ordinances. Section 10 deals with variances and the procedures for issuing permits. While we can create our own zoning ordinances, they must align with state law. And chapter 40, section three A, is one such law that municipalities must comply with or face the consequences, outlined in subsection B through C of section three A. The claim that people will lose property rights is farcical. In fact, individuals are gaining more property rights with the ability to build one to three family units, or convert a two-family to a three-family. When considering zoning changes or special projects that come before the council, I ask myself, does it make sense? And does it fit the unique character of the neighborhood? This zoning change aligns with existing zoning in many areas of our city, which already allow for three, which have three in family units, and some areas have four or more family units. This will not change the character of our city. Instead, it will help alleviate the affordability crisis and support families by creating more opportunities for multi-generational families to downsize. As I've stated before, this is not a mandate to zone. It is not a man, it is a mandate to zone, not to build. It is not. It is a mandate to zone. No one will be forced to build anything if they don't want to do it. Non-compliance with state law will have serious consequences for the city we all love. It could affect our ability, it is going to affect our ability to receive grants. And as we've just heard, we are now out of $400,000, which would have supported our efforts to improve water and sanitary systems in our downtown area, and also improve critical infrastructure. Talk about improving roads, sidewalks. This is what people are calling me about. Thank you. And I urge my colleagues to vote no.
Councillor Memart?
I can't but echo my two colleagues, although not quite as boldly and eloquently. But the fact of the matter is, we are an MBTA community. We benefit from the rail station into Gloucester and to Rockport. And the MBTA just recently completed an investment of $100 million to rebuild our antiquated rail bridge. That's money that they've invested in long-term service to this community. I, I agree that I, that my impression is that many people who signed this petition didn't fully understand the impact and the financial impact of what they were doing. Yes, bring more public discussion, but it's going to cost $25,000 just to have an election, and it's going to set us back. It's setting us back. And it's sad. It's, it's really quite pitiful. It's a step backwards for Gloucester to go through the process that we did such an excellent job at meeting and stepping up to the first time round with a lot of community participation. So I will be voting no. And I, again, I hope that we can educate the, the population of Gloucester to better understand the work we've done and what the impact of being out of compliance with state law on three A means for us and our pocketbooks. Thank you.
Councillor Gilman?
Thank you, council president. So as the vice chair of planning and development, I was involved with this from its inception. The things that I want to state is, first of all, the housing shortage in Gloucester is very real. It's affecting young couples. It's affecting our employers. It's infecting, it's affecting seniors who'd like to age in place. And it's, and it's a huge problem. Our city council unanimously approved a thoughtful and conservative multifamily overlay district and ancillary zoning in four districts, allowing multifamily zoning by right without a special permit, provided the property is compliant, and provided a minimum of one parking spot. It was thoughtful. It had a lot of community engagement in the meetings that we had. And it was very conservative. Next, I just want to reiterate what my colleagues have already stated, that three A is a state law and has serious financial implications to all of our residents. It's been reviewed now that the HLC has said that we're going to be treated as non-compliant on January 1st. And shame on us. We're going to be losing a grant for Gloucester Ave. We're going to be losing a grant for, for financing our $200 million, which is another problem for our secondary water treatment plan. There's going to be another grant for 500 mil, $500,000 that we're going to miss out on. And one of the ones that's most near and dear to me is something that we didn't talk a lot about, but of which Dave Holden shared with us at our, one of our public hearings, is that all of our wonderful Gloucester housing authorities are going to be shorted between $160,000 to $660,000 a year off their budget for, for support from the state. And what does that mean to all the folks that you all know and love in all these housing authorities? Right now, they're, they have a wonderful rate of 400 a month. And so somehow, something's going to have to happen to make up for a difference of that loss of that money every year while we're not, while we are non-compliant. That's not okay. And then the other thing that I wanted to say is, although I appreciated the, the process of the reconsideration and the charter of, of what occurred, and I also watched closely the, the board of registrars meeting that occurred on, I believe it was November 8th, along with our city clerk and our city solicitor, and about nine members of the public that were there watching. I, I appreciated the due diligence that the 34 folks that had filed that they were concerned with their names being brought forward. But, but something I do want to state right now, you know, fraud was one of the issues that they had to talk about in forgery. But one of the things that really is just really hitting home for me is the misrepresentation. And I want to just give you one example, councillors, of something that really has bothered me. On September 9th, one of the three initiators sent an email out to 500 people. I counted the numbers today, 500 people. And basically, what this email said is recently, is September 9th, was that if you're not in favor of increasing Gloucester's population by over a third, okay? And let me just pause for a second, over a third, that's 10,000, because our population is 29,740. So if you're not in favor of increasing Gloucester's population by over a third, 10,000 people, it is imperative that you attend, and even better, if you speak at the public hearing coming up on September 11th. That, to me, councillors, is misrepresentation. I'm all for free speech, but misrepresentation that is leaving us in a situation here where this is going to cost our city and our taxpayers tons of money because of misrepresentation is problematic to me. So I too will be. So I too will be voting no to rescind. I stand tall on this, on this vote, and I cannot say enough about the hard work of the planning board and community development, and, and all the folks that worked so hard to come up with something that was very fair and very minimal. So let's just, let's stick to our votes, counselors, and, and make sure that we do a good job of making sure people understand the difference of what was misrepresented and what is factual in this whole process. So thank you for listening. I'm sorry I couldn't be there tonight, I'm not feeling well. Thank you, Council President.
Oh, you got to hand up, Frank?
I, yeah, I just put it up. Can you hear me?
You're up.
Perfect. I'll just keep this short. I, I, I do agree with my fellow counselors in what, what we did a few months ago in passing the 3A. Again, I stay with my fellow counselors on 3A initiative. I've heard concerns from Wolford residents who felt unsure on what they were signing. But I want to ensure everyone that Gloucester's character would not be altered with what we passed the last few months ago, and how important grant money is for Gloucester, not just for today, but for Gloucester's future. Thank you.
Okay. We've had the motion seconded. We're ready to vote. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
We didn't want her weigh in?
No, I'm good. You guys, you guys. All right, my job is to keep everybody in line.
Okay, on the motion to rescind, Councilor Gross.
No.
Councilor Grow.
No.
Councilor Majota.
No.
Councilor Memhard.
No.
Councilor Benson.
No.
Councilor Gilman.
No.
The vote is six in favor, I'm sorry, zero in favor, six opposed, three absent. The motion to rescind fails.
Thank you. All right. This means that this will go before a ballot initiative at the next city election, whether it be, please quiet down, whether it be a special or at the November election, this will be on the next city election. Thank you very much. Motion to adjourn, motion is so moved. Motion made by Councilor Grow, seconded by Councilor Memhard. Please call the roll, Madam Clerk.
Councilor Gross.
Yes.
Councilor Grow.
Oh, yeah.
Councilor Majota.
Yes.
Councilor Memhard.
Yes.
Councilor Benson.
Aye.
Councilor Gilman.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn passes at 7:03.
Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.